Welcome to the State of the Fair in the Heart of the Church.
Welcome, Pastor Mike Starkey of St Peter's Church by St Mary's.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for the gifts of creation and for our society which is a part of it. Enable us to be good and wise stewards of all that you entrust to us. Preserve your creation and enable us to live within limits and seek sustainable ways. We thank you for all who fulfill public office and all recognized and unrecognized who serve their neighbor through their daily vocations and callings. Bless and prosper them and each of us through each other's service. Guide and bless our nation, grant us a continuation of order, cohesion, and increase the respect and knowledge of you of authority generally and of each other. Grant us peace and those things that make for peace. May justice, righteousness, truth, and all that is good be held in honor by all. Bless the state, its leaders, our city, and this municipality. Turn us from all letters dark and unhealthy and shine perpetual light upon us. Be with all who serve here in the area of Florence. Bless this area. Guide tonight's meeting, give wisdom and a willingness to transcend self-interest and our fallen natures in order to pursue what is right and for the common good. Above all, we thank you for a gift of a savior in the coming new heavens and new earth with its unfathomable joy and reign of perfection. In his name, Jesus the Lord, we pray. Amen. You're welcome.
... Good evening, everyone, and much that we have an apology I think from all of you earlier, and I expect all of the days to be right, of course. I'm doing some national news for 22 May and the special area of six. ...
Steve, thanks. Second floor, juicy. Any discussion? Anybody?
...
Here, I think I might have sent the April minutes of business to the corporate secretary, and the May minutes were adopted at a meeting tonight, so I'll send those through shortly.
I have minutes for February and April, sorry, to yourself. And I would ask Alderman to read the ones I put out on the email with the invite for a meeting tomorrow night, which is our council's opportunity to host the regional group. And also that within the minutes, there is a comment on the road safety, ground zero project that we would be promoting if we had a community road safety committee, and the fact that these issues all interrelate. So it would be good to see some Aldermen come along tomorrow night and meet some of the other reps from other councils. It'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the course of the four communities, helping well-being and financial and the meeting of the budget committee.
.........
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I think it's very straightforward. We know that which top was here for years now, and it was to change the use of it. I've read the report. I think it's very straightforward.
I was thinking. ... 1.3.2 is a development application of the annual terrorist order to enable this to the president. Alderman, on that. Application 33, how about that? On the can, second one, please. For the development application, 2.3.5, on the right, right? On the can, second one, please. Right, so let it go. Development application, can I lay it for last one, just for China, this is right?
Do you mind? ...
I'll move the amended motion, which is to initiate a draft amendment to the council from planning scheme for, and it's been circulated.
Do you have a second for us? Alderman, thank you.
I think that basically this is a landlocked piece of land that should have been included in the village plan in the first place. And I think that without going into any great detail, we should include it and that it wasn't looked at properly when the draft was done for the area. And I recommend the amended motion to council.
I agree with that. I know from personal experience, a lot of locals have been looking at this area and particularly on the shell, it is an excellent aspect for that area to develop in the future. Hopefully support it.
This is my next rise on the motion, which is an alternative motion for that council resolves on the issue of the document. ... Sorry, 21,970, of the paper. All the papers.
Yes, ma'am. I'd just like to ask of Mr. Lovell, just a couple of things that are a bit confusing with me. At one point, I think, on page 209, there's a comment, no work to the upgrade of the right-of-way proposed merely an emergency escape route. And then on under 5.5 on page 210, the existence of the right-of-way and therefore the ability of the owners is a civil matter not standing there, it is an existing right-of-way which can be used at any time. And one question, it only be used for emergencies, and then the next page saying will be used at any time. And I understand it's a right-of-way, it's a right-of-way, but why the comment that is merely an emergency escape route?
Please, ma'am, I regretted it. The thing we were trying to say is that if there is a right-of-way there now, the proposal is this right-of-way used as an emergency exit, say, for rush hours. Because there's no construction as a problem like that, that's not fully included in the proposal, maybe wouldn't be stated 3.5, they're used on a right-of-way like that. It would be provened to be.
Just one further question. There's a dam here that's mentioned. And my sense, the right-of-way finishes with the dam, but it says the emergency just won't go through the dam. But it seems that it would have to go through the dam, but I might be looking at that incorrectly. Sorry. It seems that the dam on the subject property and the right-of-way on the adjoining property, the right-of-way says to finish at the dam, that's all. And in the note, it says there's no proposals, the dam will be filled in or anything. Any questions?
But... I guess attachment two depicts the dam best, doesn't it?
Maybe the answer is in condition two, which asks for an amended plan. We locate the right-of-way through 21 doors, drive safely, can access to right-of-way over 87, without the approval of the member of the dam.
The right-of-way can't be extended without approval.
I think we're talking about the right-of-way, we need the company. Not the right-of-way of the company.
Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers?
I'd like to question that and follow that line of thought purely with regard to a right-of-way. If it comes up to a dam, whether it's on someone else's property or not, and it's an emergency access, then how is it usable?
We're talking about the dam again, that the land has got to run, so the right-of-way can be created publicly, because of the effect the right-of-way has to the property. So the gap is good.
Move the right-of-way around the dam, yes?
The right-of-way is around the right-of-way.
Which plan, attachment one or two?
It's the attachment two, based on attachment one.
As long as access for fire services are not completed, then that's okay. But I think there should be discussion to make sure that that access is usable.
No, that...
Just to clarify, to Mr. Mayor, it's not usable for the public. It's only usable for those people having legal entitlement over the right-of-way as part of their title. And it would be an emergency access in times of emergency supply. So it's not going to be constructed as a road.
Any other speakers? Roger Paul?
Just sorry. So with the new subdivided blocks, the people, presumably people, you know, won't have a legal access across that right-of-way except for emergency?
To me, Mr. Mayor, it's a right-of-way which will be able to be used at any time because it's a right-of-way entitled, it doesn't strictly. However, it's not going to be constructed as a road and then let itself to hit the other van, emergencies. And can I just add that this kind of type of access is regular on non-urban subdivisions? It's not unusual.
All right. I'll put the motion in, which is the office's recommendation for approval. All those in favor carried unanimously, and that concludes our business as a planning authority. I don't know whether Alderman Walker wanted to be advised at that point near general law, since he didn't appear in interest. However, moving on, next item is 11.7.1, under governance. The draft campaign catch management plan that council notes the plan and endorses to this. All in the file. Thank you. Yeah, I take it you're moving.
I'll put the recommendations now.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All endowed. Thank you. Alderman.
I'm impressed we've got this far. I'm impressed that the state government is behind it. And I think that we should go slowly but target and focus on two aspects, and that is like the tripping and de-sexing of kittens. The rest of the feral target ideology needs to be teased out a bit more. But I'm just so pleased that we've taken the first step and got this discussion on the way.
Any other speakers? Put the motion in, that we note the plan and endorse the response. All those in favor. Carried unanimously. 11.7.2 is the adoption of the new code of conduct. Now, there's two parts to this. I'll deal with part A first, which is we formally adopt the model code. And then there's part B that actually leaves it up to us to request the minister to endorse another aspect, which I imagine General Manager refers to the following item, which deals with the code of conduct. Sorry. The Gibson benefits register. So if you've got some words for item B, we'll talk, deal with item A first. But I have a move and second up for item A, please. Thank you, Alderman Chong. Second and all, juicy. We'd like to speak for, well, General Manager thinks his words.
Not extensively, so he'll have to think quickly. We talked just through quite a lot in, you know, quotes up. It doesn't do everything probably that we'd quite like it to, but it's reasonable. It's better than the old one. We'll live with it. I think we should adopt it and then put in whatever changes we would like to make it better, from my point of view.
I must say that no code of conduct is totally prescriptive. I rely on the draft aid of this code to have done a pretty good job.
Any other speakers on the code of conduct? Alderman Walker.
Yeah. I guess it's notionally common sense, but it's pretty ordinary that such is the way we even have to legislate. Common, obvious sense. That's how it is. I've got no dramas with anything in it, just the idea that you would need to be reminded in, you know, 80% of these things that that's not the right thing to do is... Anyway, yeah, no, I'll be supporting it.
Alderman Paul?
I'll be commenting with very comment.
I'll put the recommendation there that council formally adopts the model code of conduct. Two very... All those in favor. Carried unanimously. Now, item B is that council considers whether we should seek ministerial approval to further vary the code. And General Manager?
Well, you can either do nothing, Mr. Mayor, or, I'm sorry, I should be on my feet. Or if you wish to incorporate it, can I suggest that something along the lines of that council seek ministerial approval to vary the code of conduct by the inclusion of council's gifts and benefits policy.
Okay. Alderman here.
Sure. I'd be delighted, actually. I was going to move that we do nothing on this, because I believe... Do you want a second before I go on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If we have a second, then we do nothing. Alderman.
Well, whilst not entirely convinced by the motion, I think it does deserve merit and consideration through conversation.
Can I, well, no, I think this will... I was speaking to you as well, General Manager, for a moment there.
I just believe the code of conduct is very serious, Mr. Mayor. I believe a gift register is a totally different thing. It should be kept totally different. I think the two are totally different. I think this is just putting something in, something very important. I consider, even though I know a gift register is extremely important, I would just like to see it separate with.
Yes, I've certainly benefited from the movers' words. Oh, now what, you're agreeing with them?
Any other speakers? Alderman Chong.
I guess just very briefly, gifts and benefits are mentioned in the code of conduct, but really, really briefly and just saying that here's the highest standard of transparency doesn't really cut it in terms of describing what you should do. And I think the policy that we have goes a lot further and gives a lot more guidance.
Better give Alderman a peer's the writer in time. Okay, so the motion before the chair is in relation to B that we do nothing. All those in favor? Against? The motion is lost. Do we have anyone interested in moving the alternative that we approach the minister?
If I'd like to, with the motion that the General Manager just laid out before...
Other speakers? Put motion in that we approach the minister. In fact, I'll read it out again.
Oh, I better read it, Mr. Mayor. As much as I have my guff, the same as last one. That council seek ministerial approval to vary the code of conduct by the inclusion of council's gifts and benefits policy.
All those in favor? Against? Actually carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for the forbearance on that very difficult matter. Item 11.7.3 is to do on estri program restructuring to give incremental support to the agreement and become Alderman Campbell. Second up. Alderman, one very, thank you. Any speakers? In that case, I'll put motion. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Item 11.7.4 is a review of the local government act. There's a discussion paper with a recommendation. Provided? Alderman Walker?
Yes. What is circulated around the desk is basically what I sent in my email today. It's Tavon Collier one. And I wish to move what I've incorporated here. And if you want a set of words around this, it would be...
There's no need for further explanation at this point until I get a second up and we have a debate. Does anyone willing to second Alderman Walker's motion? Thank you, Alderman McFarlane.
Yes, I was just going to say that in essence, it should basically be that the further comments tabled be appropriately refined and incorporated in the council's response. What have I done? I've just added to some of those components. I'd like to think that they've been strengthened up in some parts. There's a real, I have some real concerns that some of the ideas floated in this document could do a massive change and turn around the local government if adopted. We could have no General Manager's role. We could disenfranchise a whole lot of voters. We may end up with no deputy mayors. We may end up with mayors elected around the table or mayors elected separately. There's a whole lot of things along those components. There are issues in the local government amongst the club of 29. I'm not sure that those problems are particularly endemic here. Would be concerning to me if things were sort of overly tipped over to try and address all the perception of problems or real problems elsewhere. So I'd like to think that, you know, we had a good amount to work within in the agenda document, and I've just added some extra ones to it as circulated before, so I seek your support.
Just very briefly, I'd like to thank Alderman Walker for the work he's done. I guess what frustrates me about reading this is it looks very reactive, that there's been problems in a few places, and it's, let's try and fix it by legislation. And it gets so prescriptive and so rigid that actually you have no capacity to deal with things as they are. And you're punishing the councils that do the right thing by trying to make it really difficult for everybody. So I think it's important we put in these comments and make our bills known.
I also thank Alderman Walker for the effort that he's put into producing this. I actually wish I'd had a little bit more time to read through it and maybe suggest changes. But having said that, we haven't had a lot of time generally to consider this. And, you know, with the time I have had to look through it, I can't see particularly objectionable.
Yes, look, I thank the input of my fellow councillors. When I was doing that introduction, I perhaps was couching things more in the negative. There's some really good things that are raised as well. And I think continuing professional development is something we should all, or perhaps look towards, etc. I'm in at the idea of a police check for candidates in here, which is probably a good thing to get this motion out of the line. I'm up to an individual response.
Thank you. The motion before the chair is submission as proposed by Alderman Walker. All those in favor?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify? Is it Alderman Walker's submission or...
No, no, it is... Alderman Walker is... Motion? What in question is motion?
Which was the complimented other one that I raised. Yeah, to add to. Thank you. And it is clear on.
All right. 11.7.5 is now the gifts and benefits register, but also meeting procedures. Both, it might seem strange that they're both together, but they are in fact to recognize the fact that we have one code of conduct now. are in fact to recognise the fact that we have one code of conduct now so if I could have a mover for the recommendation please Alderman Chong thank you Alderman Chong speakers there being no speakers motion is the officer's recommendation all those in favour carried unanimously and Alderman's question time? No matters on notice was up with this side of the room Alderman Walker or McFarlane?
I'd like to speak to an email I've got today the I'm not sure I've got the name right but it's Crumorne Avenue the road that goes off Crumorne Avenue being Thank you and I just felt that the argument in the email had substance and that in the past when we've looked at this road we have asked for people to put in financial assistance towards building it up.
Question?
Question is when are we going to do it?
Well firstly before I ask for some response from our asset manager I have asked for a mayoral response on that which will be copied to all the honour. Mr Stevens are you able to give us any advice on on that question please?
Through you Mr Mayor I'll answer it I've not seen the an email today did you say I'm not yet seen the email so I just have to take it on notice and will provide advice through the briefing report because I don't I actually don't know what it's proposing so I can't.
All right we'll have a provide a note in the weekly briefing report in fact the best way to deal with this would be the mayoral response will be copied to all the honour.
Second question? Within the context of the mayoral response could we also have an indication of where we could put it in next year's budget because regardless of whether we have to
You've asked a question.
Just add to budget response.
And we'll drop that waiting in the mayoral response I don't know what we're talking about so I can't. Alderman Chong?
I just have one question of Alderman James that as he's not here I might just ask the general manager just for a bit of clarification Alderman James in Allen's Mercury last Friday and I'm quoting this I'm just wanting clarification and he says as I understand residents at the time they sign a contract to purchase a dwelling in places such as Fairway Rise can I just be clear they don't sign a contract to purchase a dwelling?
Through you Mr Mayor my belief is they don't actually purchase the dwelling they contract to have occupancy like a lease for a period of time but they don't purchase the property no.
And a supplementary question and then in further slides and I'll quote again the exercise for some councils to extract rates from residents in retirement villages we we don't attempt to extract rates from the residents.
Through you Mr Mayor going with our rating policy we do provide a I don't think exemption is the right word but certainly a rebate so I'm gonna my colleague waving at me I better hand over.
Through you Mr Mayor if I answered the question correctly the rates are actually embedded on the owner of the land which is the operator.
They don't attempt to extract rates from the resident.
Sorry I thought you said something about done.
The quote is the exercise by councils to extract rates from residents in retirement villages.
Yeah okay Mr Barthes?
No that's fine.
Alderman down?
Sort of wanna say this letter from Mr Paul from a pretty nice person said member organisations have received extremely strong legal advice that the land on which the retirement villages have been constructed is a matter of raw land owned and operated question for charitable purposes well where does that leave us in the legal number I just wanted to know are we ever sharing a court case on us or what?
Through you Mr Man there's been no indication at this stage that there will be a court case and I would expect that each party will have sought their own legal advices and yeah I haven't seen their legal advice but I know council has had legal advice which you've seen and our legal advice I believe is quite firm in its opinions.
Second question which can I put in the house manager's confidential matter?
Certainly no.
Alderman Piers? Thank you. This question I have to Mr Paul and I just need some clarification on this is it correct that the council already offers rates rebates to charities providing emergency full-time accommodations to people who have nowhere else to live and do not have to pay an in an ongoing fee for example if common ground has been used about common ground was in Clarence would they receive this rebate?
Through you Mr Mayor council so council's rating policy certainly doesn't doesn't seek to impose the rate liability upon premises that are being used and occupied for genuine charitable purposes or for housing of low income residents or tenants or the like they certainly so certainly they would be eligible to apply for the rebate that council does provide for those types of premises.
Thank you second to Alderman Piers all those in favour?